Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the July 20th work session of Salisbury City Council. Before we get started this afternoon, I'd just like to share that this morning I ran into a recruiter friend and was reminded of those serving each day in uniform and the risks they accept in operating during a war without front lines. And we want to thank them for their service and ask the few of you that we have here today and those few watching at home to share with us, join with us in a moment of silence as I read the names of the victims that died in Chattanooga, Tennessee. Reminder that they didn't die in a distant country, but they were still victims of terrorism. United States Marine Corps Lance Corporal Squire Wells. United States Marine Corps Sergeant Carson Holmquist. United States Marine Corps Staff Sergeant David Wyatt. United States Marine Corps Gunnery Sergeant Thomas Sullivan. United States Navy Petty Officer Randall Smith. Please join me in a moment of silence in their memory. So this afternoon, we have first, should apologize that we're starting a little bit late. We had a closed session that will continue after the open session items that we have on our agenda this afternoon. The first item that we have in our open session agenda is the employee handbook change that would require city residency for department head, department directors. Ms. Glanz, I assume you'll be presenting this?
Good afternoon. This is just a small change in language, just stating that any new department head after August 31st of this year would be required to live within the city limits of Salisbury. There is a caveat that if the administration was interested in a certain candidate, that they could bring that name forward and the council could waive that requirement if it was, you know, someone really wanted to go after. So that's pretty much the gist of it. The mayor feels that this is a good, a good thing to require department head directors to live inside the city for proximity reasons and, you know, just the commitment to the city overall. And hopefully as many other city employees, employees would follow suit.
Okay. Now, I'm a big proponent of incentives and encouraging city employees to live within the city, but I do think, you know, leading by example is a good idea. And I also like that this applies to new department heads and doesn't affect the living situation of any of our current department heads.
[laughter]
As they rejoice from the audience.
I do have one question.
Ms. Mitchell?
The keys for employees program that we have, I am not super familiar with the requirements for that. Is there a longevity requirement? They have to be here a year? Is this something that someone, if we were hiring a new department head, that would be available to them to help maybe bridge that gap or incentivize them to live in the city?
I can't answer the detail to that question. I know Jeanne is pushing it out more, a few times a year after our conversation, we followed up with her, but I don't know the specifics I can find out for the next, you know, if this moves forward for you.
Yeah, I think this council's been really supportive of re-energizing that program, getting it back into a useful incentive.
And we don't have the funds for relocation expenses and that kind of thing. And there are differences, obviously. Someone that lives in relative proximity coming here, that might be one that comes to us for an exemption, but somebody that's moving across country, we want them to come in the city or from a distance, to come within the city. But any way that we can help with that. So if, I don't know what the rules are for that, but I would like to find out.
Any comments or concerns about the policy change?
I just, I like where it says we can waive by council, but there's enough reason.
Okay.
I'm satisfied with what I've asked.
Anything else? Ms. Mitchell?
Well, yes. Would that exemption possibility be known when the job posting is made? Because what I don't want to have is people that don't even apply because they're not interested in moving into the city. You know, we have the one person that's two blocks out of the city and says, oh, but you have to be a city resident, so they don't apply and we miss that, that opportunity.
Mm-hmm.
So I would say that if that's known in the posting, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, what's, again, I don't really know our advertising procedures per se. I mean, I have a rough sense of how it works and where we put the jobs and what the language looks like, but I mean, I assume that could be just a sentence thrown into every single, you know, that when a department head opening is advertised, there's a sentence that says, you know, "City code requires," or the city employee handbook requires that this position, that the occupant or the incumbent live in the city limits of Salisbury, but that, you know, that may be, unless granted an exception by council.
So they know that they can apply, but, and when they acquire for deep, for more detail, of course, you can tell them that would be, you know, somebody that lived close or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Well, anybody can apply for it, but it's not going to be just willy-nilly.
Right.
They're moving a significant distance. They can move in the city as easily as outside, but I just don't want to lose, like I said, opportunities to great people. And the department head postings are generally cast wider than any other staff member posting, I think, so I think that's easy enough to do.
Okay. All right. Other comments, questions, concerns?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So with that one change, is there council consensus to move this to legislative session?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, there is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glanz.
One question from Ms. Tillman, real quick. That would be quoted as being city code because we're adopting the handbook by, or would it be, I should say, we're adopting the handbook by resolution, so.
It would all apply, I mean, the code actually defers to the handbook on these issues.
Okay.
So by adopting this as part of the handbook, it supplements the code.
So the language in the posting, by saying, "City code requires," that would be?
Right, or, I mean.
Same equivalent?
Yeah, I'm not sure if the use of the word code or city policy requires, well, I'd have to double check that.
Yeah, because it has a different implication, saying city code requires versus city policy requires.
Yeah, normally if it were the city code, you couldn't just pass a resolution amending it technically, so I think it would be more city policy.
Okay. And this is how handbook updates are handled through resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Okay, next item on our agenda is the Salisbury Marina Pedestal Replacement Project. Mr. Molds?
Yes.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon, all. The city's been very fortunate to have extended to it a Waterway Improvement Fund grant for replacement of our marina pedestals. These are the pedestals that provide power and water to the rented slips so boats can hook up and utilize those services. In the FY '16 budget, we had asked for $25,000 in that budget with the hope that we would also get the grant, which we luckily have to do. So we have $50,000 to work towards replacing these pedestals. This is a picture, kind of what you're looking at. They basically will provide lighting of the dock as well as water and electric service. It also has a potential for cable, internet, phone, but we're kind of getting a survey from some of the boat owners to whether that's necessary anymore, particularly since we have Wi-Fi, so that a cable connection isn't as necessary.
Sure.
So, as you know, might know, we have 86 slips at the marina and about 58 pedestals. And those pedestals include only, not only the ones at the marina, but as you go along Brew River up to the small park, there's a couple pedestals up there. So those are ones we gradually wanted to replace.
Can you talk about the status of the, before we get into this, the other projects ongoing at the marina?
Oh, sure. We had initially, there was some redirected bond funds, about $50,000. And what we've done with that is we paved the entrance to the marina. That's complete. We've installed the sign on the building at the marina. We've also put a sign out in front on Fitzwater, a decorative sign sets up. We still have to do some tree plantings along the entrance because you want to wait until the fall when the trees go dormant for that. And hopefully next week, we will have the installer come out to put the decorative fence at the entrance gate there. It's going to be the chain link, it's been kind of hit over the years, but, so we're going to put a decorative fence that matches the fence at the adjacent apartment complex.
Nice.
So that was the first money that we got. We then also got a $5,000 mini grant from the Waterway Improvement Fund to help with the construction of a floating dock kayak launch. And then subsequent to that, we applied for a State Highway Administration recreational grant for $40,000, which we've gotten. And we just met last week with the NARTO follow-up on that. They'll be assisting us doing the specifications and design and to install the floating dock. And that'll be a kayak launch as well as capability for launching racing shells if that develops as either SU University or intramural or team or club type sport.
What's the timeline on construction, designing and construction of that?
That one, it'll probably be, I'm thinking, another eight or so months because we have to get a waterway permit, wetlands permit. Because what you have to do is you have to drive some piles in the water out there, so you have to go through that permitting process. The other project that's kind of tied into that is the $90,000 grant that we got for a boathouse because of these shells are expensive and they can get quite costly. We're providing sort of build it and they will come approach to be able to store those safely within the facility. That was a $90,000 grant with a $10,000 match, and that'll be in-con contributions that we'll be doing. So where we've gotten some information, we did a concept plan as far as what it might look like, and we've contacted a couple pole barn contractors have given us some quotes and rough idea that we can do that. So we're going to move ahead on that. Now, that also requires a critical area approval, so that'll take some time to get that permit.
What were you looking at for capacity in, say, skulls and kayaks, whichever?
Well, right now, it'd probably be pretty open because you can, what you can do, we have a design for the larger crude skulls, they would be, you could stack them along the side on racks and then the smaller ones on the side, but the one up in Chestertown that we saw, they actually start storing them overhead. So there's a good potential for variety. In addition to what that storage area is, we were sort of figuring on a crew room so teams could do planning and also equipment storage room where the oars, life jackets, other paraphernalia that would go along with it that would have secure storage there.
There'd be locker space or something in the short.
Yeah, it's kind of what it would be like a lock. Either the lockers in the crew area or a larger locker for larger equipment. And then the outside area is, that's existing there, there's a fenced-in area that would be able to store the racing shell trailers if they go to other meets as well as kayak storage that could be done inside. So it's a great potential for bringing in a lot more recreational use out there. So this, this project will start the process of replacing some of the older pedestals that are there. We're looking to see if it's possible to focus on the ones that we get this time to our rented slip users so they can have the benefit of the new facilities that are there and then continue the progression. Originally, where there was a $75,000 project to get them all replaced, so we're looking at some options there. If we don't necessarily go with the cable or phone that might not be needed and look at a couple other different vendors, we may be able to try to get, see if we can get it all done this time.
So it says the total project is 50,000, the grants for 25. Is the other half a match or is that additional pedestals?
The 25 is in the budget for FY that we, that the city put money in, plus the 25 from the Waterway Grant. The Waterway Grant is 100 percent. It didn't require a match.
Okay.
But it's, when we do the application, you kind of tell them it's a project.
Right, I was just curious because it didn't, usually we, it says if it's, there's a match requirement and it didn't, but we had a match, so I was curious if that meant more pedestals or we had to do the 50 grand, because if you're talking about not doing parts of it and having, doing certain pedestals first, I'm just curious what our requirement was.
Yeah, no, this, what we have the option to do is apply again next year for Waterway Improvement for additional one, but we kind of, originally in the CIP, I think it was looking at a three-year progression of replacing 25, 25, 25. So now we can, we're seeing that we'll be able to speed this up and if we look at some options, one of the things, if, because it's a replacement, looking at maybe we could do the labor ourselves and buy them and that could help out. Because the original idea, these were around $1,000 apiece, just the pedestals, so we'll work on, see what we can do. And I think hopefully we can maybe just do the marina and then slowly work our way up the river back towards the drawbridge because those don't get used, hardly any. So, yep.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of moving this, or, well, can I get consensus to move this to legislative session?
Yes.
Yes.
Consent agenda, fine by me. Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay. All right. Next item on our agenda is the city curfew. Chief Duncan, invite you to come and join us.
Thank you for getting us the colored graphs. It makes a lot more sense now.
Afternoon, Chief.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Okay. So we've, I guess we've discussed this once or twice now. And the last time we talked about the curfew, and I'm going to just hand it over to you in one second, Chief, but we did talk about hearing from Department of Juvenile Services, I believe. And do you, these are guests?
So I reached out to juvenile services and invited them. They were unable to attend because they cannot participate in legislative action which may impact some of the very clients that they are in fact serving.
Okay.
This was a problem for them and I understood that, and so they are not able to be with, here with us and participate in this discussion.
Okay. Then I'm going to hand it over to you and let you lead the conversation.
Okay, well, my understanding is that you had all requested some information from other jurisdictions who currently have curfew legislation in effect in their jurisdictions. And we reached out to a number of agencies, 13 of whom we were able to speak to representatives over the matter. It was as to whether or not that they felt that this was a tool for them to help them reduce crime. It was about a 50/50 response as to whether or not it reduced crime. They agree that, you know, it reduces some of the nuisance issues and they all unanimously, all 13 representatives stated that it was helpful for the police officers to have when they're policing. They also, some agencies, it really depends on the officer as to whether or not the legislation is actually enforced. And most of the agencies are able to make contact with a guardian or a parent and just depending on agency policy, they either have that individual respond to headquarters to pick up the child or they actually drive the child to the residence. I know that was something that you had asked for us to do, certainly not all-inclusive considering that list of Maryland entities that do have curfew legislation on the books, but at least we made a good dent in starting to contact the agencies that do. On par with us, Laurel, Hagerstown, you know, they deal with some of the same issues that Salisbury does when it comes to crime in general and also in working with their juveniles, with their minors as well. And for the most part, you know, it's, it just depends on the officer out in the street who's enforcing it. We do have, there's an officer that works for us that came from another jurisdiction down in Virginia, and they found it, this particular gentleman, this member of our agency also agreed that for a line officer, it is beneficial to have. It's just another tool that they can use. As far as our particular stats go, I know that what you're now able to look at deals mostly with our contacts in those later hours or the early, early morning hours and late evening hours. And you're seeing the field interview reports, so you can see how many contacts that we're having with our age group that we're concerned with that are moving around after 10:00 PM at night. Obviously, it's very clear that once they get out of school and for the hours that continue until about seven o'clock at night, we have a high rate of juvenile crime and related crime, but we also do have, in the later evening hours and early morning hours, we do have an interesting spike during those time periods as well.
Were any of the towns that you looked at on the eastern shore?
Um, let's see. Well, Hagerstown is not, and Laurel is not. Those were the ones that were similar to us in makeup. But I'll just, for example, we contacted Chestertown. I know Capitol Heights is not. Charlestown, Cecilton.
These places have curfews?
Mm-hmm. Smithsburg.
Tiny towns.
Yep, Rising Sun, Perryville, Port, oh, sorry. Greensboro, Laurel, Northeast. Those were the, some of the agencies that we contacted.
Some eastern shore towns, but small.
Well, the smaller ones.
Yeah, but Hares Town and Laurel are definitely the two most similar to Salisbury.
They're similar in composition.
I have a question before we go on.
Sure.
I know we all received a letter from ACLU.
I didn't receive any letter.
Really?
What you said about, you didn't get the letter?
Uh-uh.
That should have been.
You received a letter from ACLU, and I think personally before you gave the letter, I think that you should be able to read that letter forward to her. I thought you didn't receive it. Because according to the ACLU, towns on the eastern shore, from my understanding, cannot implement curfews.
Right. And the daytime portion of that is not legal. The hours are restricted, the hours of the curfew are restricted from 12:00 PM to 5:00 AM or start earlier and later. The daytime hours wouldn't be allowed at all according to what's in this letter. And that the numbers that we are quoting don't meet the threshold in their opinion, so.
So there are, there are some disagreement, there is some disagreement about the, what Maryland Code says because as Ms. Shields pointed out in the letter that we received, it says that "The city of Salisbury has failed to meet a prerequisite for the adoption of a juvenile curfew law on the eastern shore," which I guess refers to a part of Maryland Code 11-303, Section 11-303, which says the, it says "only after making independent factual findings demonstrating a local need for a curfew." But Mr. Tillman pointed out that I think that only applies to counties.
The ACLU didn't send me a copy of this letter.
Yeah.
I'm guessing it didn't.
I'm going to send it to both of you right now.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing right now. I got it.
It says that, if you look at the title itself, which is Title 11, Title 11 in the local government article, "Powers of Code Counties," says that this title applies only to code counties. And 11303 is part of the same title. And the language in 11303 specifically says, "After making independent factual findings demonstrating a local need for a curfew, the county commissioners may adopt a juvenile curfew ordinance." And it's my interpretation that this ordinance applies to counties and the county's lawmaking power, powers, and does not apply to the city's lawmaking.
Is there something in this code that allows the city to implement or can only counties implement?
The general right of the city to, you know, enforce law, protect society would allow them to pass such an ordinance unless it was prohibited. This seems to be a restriction on the county's ability to pass such an ordinance, but would not also restrict the city. Now, the city would be bound by, you know, the Constitution and everything else. We couldn't, you know, violate some of these constitutional rights. The city of Baltimore passed an ordinance similar to the one, the draft one that you've looked at.
Right. I don't think that's been challenged.
And to my knowledge, has not been challenged.
So given that, you know, there are other municipalities on the eastern shore that Chief Duncan just read off that have curfews in place, you know, it sounds as if we certainly could without ACLU challenge or any other challenge.
Right. The ACLU is advocating for a point of view, obviously, and I don't, I guess they make it clear that they don't support, you know, juvenile curfew period. And so they've cited that section of the code, but I would disagree.
Okay.
Jake?
Yes, Jack.
Has there, I couldn't hear all of what Mark had said. Like, one question is, has there, have there been any challenges against this? He knows of.
Mr. Tillman?
I'm not aware of any challenges against the Baltimore model, which is the one that we put before the council. The ACLU in their letter cites a number of challenges based on, you know, on a constitutional basis, but to my knowledge, those aren't laws passed under the, in Maryland.
Thank you.
You could hear that, Jack?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, maybe I missed it, but I didn't hear eastern shore towns. I heard a lot of other.
I heard tons.
Tons.
Yeah. Northeast Greensboro, Charlestown, Chestertown, Rising Sun, I mean, these are all.
Rising Sun's not really.
It's considered an eastern shore town because it's in one of the nine counties.
Nine counties on the eastern shore, right.
No.
So there's three count, you know.
Only have eight on the eastern shore.
Caroline, Cecil, and Kent.
The ACLU is also stating the fact that it feels that enacting a curfew, which makes it illegal to simply be outside at certain times, only divert police resources, but require them to stop and question every juvenile who is outside during curfew hours instead of focusing their attention on those who appear to be committing crimes. Furthermore, the data provided by Salisbury Police Department reported in the support of juvenile curfew, wholly devoid of any statistics regarding the victimization of minors either during the day or night, during curfew hours or non-curfew hours. And they're questioning that you have to stop every kid that you see outside. And I know the community, I'm in wants a curfew, but I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing legally. And we don't want them, you know, some kids may be working at McDonald's and walking home from work, deliver a safety equipment. And, oh, she printed the letter.
Oh, thanks.
I'm sorry you didn't get that letter before.
That's okay. Not a problem.
We also want to make sure that minority kids are not just subjected to being stopped. Now, I have a problem personally, seeing little nine, 10-year-old kids outside at 11:00 at night. She'd be home in the day, see, riding their little scooters on the sidewalk. But when I got this letter from ACLU, I just want to make sure that we're doing legally that we can do this. That's my whole concern.
And certainly, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to run down the wrong path either because I think that we're, so far, you know, we're on the right side. It's just a community-wide frustration on what to do and how best to approach this problem. I can tell you that just last night, we had. I, I can tell you that just last night, we had another issue with a large group and we wound up making an arrest of two juveniles, um, which, you know, is unfortunate and possibly if we'd had a curfew in place, it might've not been the case. Uh, instead of creating the arrest situation, we could've just applied the, the curfew to that particular problem. Our, our theft from motor vehicles is just, um, incredible and that bounces between, um, individuals with substance abuse and, and between minors. You know, we're, we're making arrests of both, um, groups. And it's, it's incredibly frustrating, uh, to say the least. In, uh, Saturday into Sunday night, we had, uh, okay, let me just pull this up real quick. Two different complexes, um, two different regions of the, of the city. You know, where, where we had, um, multiple, I mean, more than 10 instances of theft from unlocked vehicles. And it's, it's frustrating for the officer, it's frustrating for the individuals who live here, it's frustrating for the administration, um, and we constantly put out public service announcements. We go out door to door and hang out flyers. We issue door hangers to get individuals to remove property and to lock their vehicles. So we're trying to combat it from both ends. And, and seems that the one angle of this triangle here that we haven't been able to get a handle on is, is that juvenile population. With the individuals who are struggling through their addiction problems, um, generally speaking, you know, we circle back around. We were able to make, uh, a good arrest in the, where we had that big wave, uh, that took place over on the southeast end of town, right before college let out. That individual, uh, was placed into custody. We haven't gotten his counterpart, but, you know, these are, these are not juveniles we're dealing with. These are older folks, um, and through a little bit of investigative effort, you know, we're able to make those apprehensions. The juvenile crime is, is something separate unto itself and very, very difficult to get a hold of.
So two of the, two of the other points that, um, the ACLU brought up in their letters, uh, were the, um, perceived in their mind, early hour, uh, that, you know, children would be required to be inside at 9:00 PM. Do you have any thoughts on why that's important?
No, actually, I think that this, this, uh, submission to the council was taken in whole from, from Baltimore City. And certainly, I think that there are some things that we can apply that are different, and I know that's what you would like to see as well. Haven't had an opportunity to, to make any revisions for your review, but certainly, you know, our more difficult crimes and, um, the, the times when the officers are confronting these kids are, are after 10:00 at night, after 11:00 at night. And certainly, this arrest that I spoke of earlier, where we had to arrest these two juveniles, took place minutes after midnight. We were assisting a lady who was attempting to locate her son and wound up placing two separate individuals under arrest. And actually, there were, there were three of them and one fled from us, and then another entire group, uh, came and approached this group. So, you know, you're not talking about something that happens at, at 9:00 or, or 8:30 in the evening. You know, these, these juveniles should not be out. They should be at home, they should be with family, um, and they're not. So certainly, we can make those adjustments to our ordinance.
And the other was, the other was, I think, also, um, drawn from the Baltimore, which is the four age groups.
That's correct.
There was some concern about that distinguishing between minors, minors of different age groups and how difficult that might be.
That's gonna be a problem. Uh, I, that's kind of a task, you know, to, to approach somebody and try to figure out what their age bracket is unless we have had contact with them and we know, certainly. That's gonna be difficult. So we can revise that as well.
So then that becomes self-propagating in your field interviews where you're talking to people to find out which age bracket and whether or not it's a, a curfew violation and then anything else that spins out from that conversation or if they're, um, scared and they run or they, they, you know, whatever, or, or lie about their age or lie about their name or something like that, then, then what? You know, now, now we're driving up our numbers when we're in an attempt to bring them down. I, I'm just not sure that if a parent isn't able to keep their child under control and in the house at what they deem reasonable hours, that having, that they're gonna care very much, the child's gonna care very much about a curfew or whether, you know, they are gonna have to elude the police in, in addition to their parents or whatever. I, I just, I don't know that that's gonna make that big a difference in, in enabling, as has been said a number of times, enabling the parents to better control their kids. I mean, you take them back home, you turn them over to the parent, they send them to the room and they climb out the window and they're back on the street again and, and you're doing that all night long with the same child potentially.
Well, that happens now, you know, and, and the only thing that, that comes of that is that we get them quicker into, um, DJS so that they can put some parameters and get some assistance to that family. Um, the difference here would be that you wouldn't be placing the child under arrest, per se. It would be a curfew violation. So you're, you're dealing with a different set of tools that you can apply to the situation. And I, I agree that it's, it is problematic because a lot of the parents that support this are, are in agreement that I can't keep my kid at home, you know? I don't know what to do. So that's, that's not uncommon.
So the parent last night that had the issue, you were assisting them and finding their child, you locate their child, all the other things happened, are they not able to get assistance now from anywhere with their child until they have, well, this still doesn't give them a criminal record.
Correct. But it's so many contacts and so many issues. And then, you know, we.
What do you think about that? Maybe it's, um, the one with the phone, maybe if you move that away from yours, move the, slide the phone this way and, like this way. There's three of them together too close.
So, to continue answering the question, I, I think you're asking me something that I'm probably not qualified to answer and.
I can.
Just, you know, I, I could just tell you that the, the tool aspect of it, the ability to be able to work with these kids on a different plane is, is more helpful. I think that you're gonna get those kids who are on the fence about whether they want to be followers or whether they wanna, you know, have a future for themselves. I think that you're gonna get those kids to comply with the law that the council sets up. And I think that you're gonna have that segment of the population that is gonna remain, um, resistant and gonna have a problem complying and listening to their parents. But as to how we make that work, I, I don't have that answer for you.
So DJS couldn't be here today, I'm sorry, but have they, have we worked out a program with them? Have they, are they on board what will happen?
Well, they, they really have no part in what we do. They, they will, uh, pair with us and they will do ride-alongs with us, um, which has been very, very helpful because they can identify the, the children that are on their list that they know should be under curfew and should not be out at specific hours of the day and night. So for them, it's an immediate response. So they are able to bring these kids back in immediately and then, um, set up a different pathway for them to follow.
Set their curfew because they're on probation?
Correct.
Okay, so that's already in place.
That's already in place.
So, um, what happens, what changes that allows, if we have a curfew law that allows, um, DJS to get involved and offer additional services to the family that's not there now? I'm not unders, I don't understand the change.
They only come out with us a couple of times a month versus an entire department that's out or an entire shift that's out and readily available to make, to make these, um, connections when that contact happens.
Right, but you, you, you have a child, let's say he's 14 years old, he's out past curfew. You pick him up, you take him back to the station or you take him home to his parents and how is DJS involved at that point, any more than what they are right now?
What, what we've found that's helpful is we notice DJS, we send them our documents and, and that's helpful for their case portfolio. That gives them a broader picture of what's happening with the child and what may be potentially happening with the family as well.
But what's, I don't know, not making this more clear. The, the person that, that already has, is on probation, already has a curfew. And if they're in violation, they're in violation and they see that.
Some do, some do. Not all, not all of them.
The ones that don't and don't have any other issues with the law and run afoul of the curfew, still don't have additional services from DJS that they would have now because there, there's not.
That's correct.
It's not a criminal offense.
That's right.
So saying that this allows DJS to get involved more, I don't see where.
Well, like I said, it gives them additional information for a case file that they have. As far as, um, a new contact, um, you know, that's, they're not involved at that point, although potentially it's on the radar if that individual does come into their system. They already have something that they can say, well, you know, maybe we need some additional services in this segment of this child's life or this segment, but certainly, you know, it's not the be all and end all. It may be just one contact with a police officer and a curfew violation the child ever has. That might be the only contact that child ever needs or the family ever needs. I, I don't know, but, um, Councilwoman Shields was gonna answer.
She, she, she realizes, because I had boys and had the same problem with people wanting in the house and cannot, a parent cannot go to juvenile services for help unless they commit a crime. So right now, um, as you already said, juvenile services can't help them.
Right, and that's still changing.
Now, getting, getting back to this letter, I mean, you look at B in the letter, I don't have the page number, this is page five. It says, "Curfew laws criminalize perfectly innocent conduct and infringe upon parents' fundamental right to decide how to raise their own children." And they're saying parents and guardians aren't in the best position of what rules and restrictions, but some parents cannot control their children. Because if they could control them or know what the kids were doing, you would need a curfew law. Because some parents either working two jobs or some parents may be out partying or whatever. They're not home with their children. So, so that's why a lot of kids are out here at night because they have no parent or guardian, especially the very young kids, to tell them, "Come in the house." So that's another thing we need to look at. And they say a number of courts throughout the country have recognized this felony of rape of parents. So that's why all this stuff that ACLU has brought out, we need to really look at this to make sure that we can legally do all this. Not giving, letting her, the chief do all this work. I mean, we can't really do anything.
Well, and, and I think as much as I agree with parts of this letter, it, it misses the, the ACLU's, part of, part of their letter misses the point in that, in exactly what you're saying, Shaney, um, that these curfew laws, quote, "Violate substantive due process rights of minors to enjoy freedom of movement and of parents to control the upbringing of their children," end quote. Well, the point is that these parents are not able to control the upbringing of their children with or without the curfew laws. And it's restricting the freedom of movement that is precisely what we need to, to do for certain times or, or at least with certain juveniles because it's freedom of maneuver, freedom of movement, pardon me, that has led to prevalence of juvenile crime in our neighborhoods. And that's why, and it's parents and neighbors that are asking for this. You know, we recognize that.
In, in researching some of the problems that are associated with curfew legislation, you're dealing with, um, basic constitutional rights, First Amendment, Fourth, Fifth, Ninth and Fourteenth, and you're weighing the constitutional rights of, uh, constitutionally protected rights of the parent or parents in the way that they are raising their own children against the municipality's interest in protecting those very minors. And that's the balancing test that you have to go through. And you need to keep those constitutional amendments in mind when you're applying these types of efforts. So I'm not, um, again, you know, I'll defer to our, our council in that this particular legislation from Baltimore hasn't been challenged. But if we stay within the parameters, which are obviously working to this point since they haven't had a challenge, um, most of those amendments have been met here in, in this, in this legislation from Baltimore. In other words, most of it has been constructed with an eye towards meeting these constitutional amendments, towards meeting these standards, which is what you can see with the different age brackets and times.
Another question, in the legislation, you have the caveat in there that they can assemble, as is their right, their freedom to assemble. So you walk up, you go up to a group of what appear to be juveniles underage, under the, the umbrella of the curfew, and one of them has the wherewithal to say, "Freedom of assembly." Then what do you do?
Well, again, first of all, not to approach, we wouldn't be doing our job. Secondly, freedom of assembly, fine, for what purpose? How long are you going to be? Did you know there's a permitting process that the city offers that you can engage in? If you wanted to have an assembly, you could definitely apply yourselves to that. But at 2:00 in the morning and you're obviously dealing with individuals who are well under the age of 17, freedom of assembly to do what?
Right, but I, I'm just asking because you know somebody's gonna say it.
Sure they will. I'm sure. I'm sure.
Yes, Jack, Ms. Reese?
I, I just have, I have, I have some concerns, as, as everybody does, and I think that this is something that is so new to us. Is it possible for us to put a trial period in and see, get some numbers to see how this thing actually works?
So that was something that was mentioned early on in discussions before we even presented it, and, um, that is, hasn't been removed from the table on the administration's end, from my knowledge.
Could the administration by policy, you know, simply using executive authority, could the administration learn enough to know when they were encountering juveniles that would be in violation of this policy if it were put into effect, if the law were put into effect? Rather than have a, rather than adopt a trial, you know, by, by legislation, adopting a trial period, could your officers know that between these hours, you know, let's say we simplify the thing because that's one of the things that I would think would be necessary for adoption, uh, but say between this time and this time, all minors would be in violation of the curfew? Could we at least know that?
I think that's a little restrictive. Um, I, I think that, um, I understand where you're trying to get to. First, first question, first, my first answer to the first part of your question is, yes, I think we could institute a trial period to see if it was making an impact. We already have, um, this is dated, dated stats now, but, um, certainly we've had enough of the, um, summer months to gather stats on where we are. And, um, we could, if we were to scale down Baltimore City's version of the, uh, of the legislation, I think that we could do a trial run. I would like some time, though, to sit down with our council and really make sure that we're following within the margins of those, um, those amendments that I discussed earlier to make sure we're not gonna run afoul of them.
I mean, so, so I'm, I don't know where I fall on this yet. I mean, I, I certainly, like every council member, have concerns about it, what it says about our city in terms of messaging, you know, I have concerns about.
I do too.
Do you have a reaction to that? Okay.
I certainly do. It's, it's difficult.
I mean, I think it does send a message. I think people perceive that if you're going to adopt this ordinance, then the problem is even bigger than they may have experienced in their daily life.
And that's my concern, but, you know, it's, it's hard.
I, I understand. And I also understand that, or I also believe that if there are people in neighborhoods who have identified a solution that they believe will make life in their neighborhood better, you know, and if there are officers and, and leadership of the police department who is telling us, you know, this is a tool that makes our job easier and makes it better for, uh, easier for us to police our neighborhoods, you know, again, who are we to keep those tools from your hands? So, so there, this is complicated, but I want to, I bring all those points, those complications up to get back to one fundamental issue that I have, um, and question that I think lingers, um, which is, in the absence of adequate, um, housing and in the ad, absence of adequate, uh, jail space or space to keep someone, um, and in the absence of parents who are going to receive the young person who may be in violation of the juvenile ordinance, we've talked several times about a facility, um, either in partnership with DJS, and we've talked about DJS's willingness, um, as. and we've talked about DJS's willingness, as was indicated a few weeks ago when we talked about this, or months ago, to create potentially something like that or work in partnership to create something. What do we do in the interim?
So in the interim, there is no facility where we would be able to take these kids. We would be sitting with them until we could locate a, a guardian or a parent. DJS, in my speaking with them last week on the topic, they're moving forward with some type of after-school center. I don't have a, a build-out date. I can't present you with any of that as to when that would come about. But that's their goal, because they've recognized that the volume of crime really spikes during that period right after school and then for a couple of hours, yeah. And then we have a dip, and then we have, you could see it for yourselves, we have that other little spike that leads us over into the next day. But until that time, to answer your question, we would be sitting with them.
You know, and, and my concern with that, until that time, you know, because I, I think ultimately if we can figure that piece out, it becomes a lot easier. And I think as long as it's something that is reinforcing good behaviors and the things that we want from kids and not just sticking them in a room and saying, you know, this is gonna be an extension of a partnership with not only DJS, but Stop the Violence or a community organization that's going to, you know, have you focusing on improving yourself during those hours. I, I could see there being value, but until that time, I, my concern is still that a young person who's out on the street, who's perhaps interested in, you know, nefarious behavior, or is certainly violating that ordinance, but maybe not any other law, maybe not engaged in any other criminal behavior or activity at that time. You know, the officer's then off the streets focusing on that young person rather than out there responding to calls. And the stressors that are on the other officers who are out there become higher, become greater. That, that's my concern. And I mean, you know, you're the professional, you know, on policing strategies. So I, I obviously trust your instinct more than my own, but you know, that's my concern. And that's the thing that keeps sticking in my craw, so to speak, on, on the issue of pulling an officer off the street to monitor, supervise the violator, the juvenile ordinance, curfew ordinance.
Right, I hear your concern, I share it. And, you know, again, it, it all comes down to, to balancing on certain nights of the week. You know, we know there's a higher instance of juveniles out there. And it would be one less thing for us to have to concern ourselves with. If, if we had this ordinance that would keep some of these juveniles in, of their own volition or work with their parents to not run afoul of the violation. And then if we do, if we do have to make contact with a juvenile, then how long is that gonna, how long is that gonna take that police officer off the street? But what will it prevent is, is the other question that's really the unknown. You know, that we know about exists, we just don't have the answer for that.
Right. And I think that's part of the hesitation of this body as well, is concern for the unknown. That, the concerns that we, we just discussed about, you know, the impression that is made as a result of the adoption and, and even the discussion, what are, are those impacts worth, you know, an unknown result or an unknown benefit? Other questions or comments?
I just think also that even before we implement this, I think people need to know about this, the public, the parents. Especially the parents or guardians need to know and need to hear what they say. And, and it's just gonna take a lot of work with this. I think we need to do a public outreach.
What would your vision on that look like? Because we had discussed at the last meeting, different avenues to get that message out, but where do you want that to all come into?
I would think there's agencies that work with parents, for instance, Shore Up.
Yep.
They work with many, many parents that come across, many, many parents that they have a family support unit. I think Social Service Department.
So, could I, so, could I suggest?
Those kind of agencies.
Could I suggest an alternative to that? Because I think, I think that would work in terms of getting the message out. But, but then we're asking for another entity to speak on our behalf and to say, "The city of Salisbury is considering a curfew. Come out and tell them what you think of that." I think is actually just more disruptive than it is enabling a, an honest conversation. Because remember, the impetus for, as we learned, the impetus for this conversation came from parents and, you know, neighbors. And, and I think to be sort of, you know, to, to cut out the middleman, we, we should say, I think, "We're gonna come to the neighborhood and we're gonna have the conversation."
How are you gonna do it? It's, it's still, you're gonna have to reach parents to give them, to sell the idea, because you're gonna have some parents that will not like it because of the police thing. And you, if you're trying to build a relationship between the community and the police, we don't want them, and how the police approaches the children, we don't want the children to have a bad feeling about the police department. So the relationship between the parent, the child, and the police officer, we don't want to hinder that relationship.
How about if, if, if I come up with a couple of, if my team and I come up with a couple of different venues
Yes, true.
for council to approach, approach this problem and, and get it out there, you know, for public consumption. And I propose a couple of different ideas and then we pick a unified approach.
I think that sounds great. I think having some, I think having a more refined version of what is being proposed by the administration would be better than something that we already know is not exactly what we want. So taking this Baltimore model, I'd, I'd scrap elements of this that we know won't work. You know, the age differentiation, the, you know, certain hours. I mean, I'd, I'd go ahead and scrap parts of that that we're not even interested in implementing here. And I'd work with Mr. Tillman, if you could, to, to make those refinements. Again, as long as it's something the administration supports. And then, and then I'd suggest that your, uh, uh, community meetings that you've organized and led have had probably better turnout and open conversations than a lot of community meetings have lately. So, you know, I'd suggest right there, Chief, that there's a model for community engagement.
Yeah, but that, that's, I want a broader reach than, than that, than one community or two communities. Clearly, there's press coverage, there's press interest in this, and we can utilize that to get the word out and do something similar to our coffee with your council, but this time we're, we are setting the agenda and just make it about this issue. And, and get broad in, input. I think we would need a fairly large in, uh, venue, because I think we're gonna have a lot of interest.
Either that or you can do, you know, a number of small venues. And I think you, I think you're right.
Yeah, the, the problem is, the problem with that is you're, you still, you get a small venue and you still can't control how many people show up. And every, if that night suits people or that, they wanna be the first in with their comments and you get flooded with, with.
Well, I'll, I'll proffer a couple of different alternatives for you.
I mean, I like both, but I have concern about having a venue that's too small.
Mr. Heath?
If I may, um, one of the things I think we have to, have to realize and, and during this attempt to, to reach the people, and I don't wanna put them in boxes, but there's, there's essentially three known groups and probably a fourth of parents. There are those that are, don't care. And those are the parents that they have that our teachers meet every day. Then there's the parents who are very involved, who will come out and speak. And then there's that medium group of parents that may include people who are a little bit concerned about purpose. And those, I suggest, have the kids who are most at risk but are, are potentially salvageable. And I think if we look at it in those particular ways, let's go after the majority of people that where we can salvage the most kids. And I'm all for the community involvement. Let's understand that there's gonna be a group, no matter what we do, you will never reach. That's just the way it is now.
Sure. No, I, I think that's a, a fair point.
No matter where we go with this, we're always talking about the bell curve, you know? One end's got the outstanding performers and the other end's got two percent of people who will never come around. And I agree with what Mr. Mr. Heath said. Chief, have you checked in with the disproportionate minority contact representative? And have you gotten a read from that person or have you had any conversation with him? I, I'd be interested in seeing what, what we propose here, how it will sit with him and whether or not, I know he has a lot of, he has a lot more going on than just that, how it will interface with some of the other programs that are going on with Dr. Thompson.
Had some discussions with him on it, nothing in depth. We recently attended a police community forum up in DC to talk about police and, you know, resident interaction and how we can make things better just as an industry. The, our discussion was limited, but certainly we can get more information from him on that.
I think it might actually be a resource when we look at it. You talked about putting these guy, these kids on the radar and what this program is essentially is, is radar. You know, that's what we're doing, we're, we're.
I think we're all kinda dealing with the same problem is that, you know, we're all, we all, all of these institutions, whether you're talking about DJS, whether you're talking about law enforcement, the city council, Board of Education, we're all identifying the same issues. And really is how we really support that family unit working through that limited period of time, which could span years, where they're in crisis, that's the big issue. And there are some, some real constitutional heavyweights that we have to be careful of moving forward in that. But I can certainly pull in, uh, Mr. Thompson, Dr. Thompson, and get him specifically on the issue. I can definitely ask him if he'd like to weigh in on this.
And might investigate some, you know, what are the after-school programs that are going on and what, what success he's had with getting some of that stuff going. I know we're having difficulty getting those, those issues resolved and finding a place for youth after school. But the more we investigate, the more we might find out and get somewhere with it.
And I want to say this too, Ms. Shields, that's what I'm saying. All these statistics that show after-school is probably the peak of, of what's going on with these kids. Instead, it promotes that we need after-school programs in these neighborhoods with funding. You know, I know police gets the grants from the governor's crime prevention, but the governor's office should look at ways that we can keep our kids out of the juvenile system by providing safe havens and after-school programs. Because I know they've worked before and it helped a lot and, and they just cut it out, you know, the funding, basically. And I think we need to bring it back.
I've heard anecdotally that when Stop the Violence closed, we saw a spike in the area in, in.
In that area.
Activity in that neighborhood, right after they, or as they closed and through the end of the year. I'd be interested in seeing those stats for the school year prior to their closing and then after, and even compared to last year in the same month.
I've heard the same.
And, because that, that speaks volumes in, in exactly what Ms. Shields is saying and, and the need for community centers and places for kids to go and things for them to do after school when there's no one at home, when they're, or even if there is someone home, but home is not a safe place to be in some cases.
Do we have a date when they specifically close down? Or maybe a ballpark?
Get that, but I think it was February.
There was a condemnation order. There was a condemnation order on the building. So I'm sure we could pull that from, yeah.
Okay.
Susan.
You know, we have those anecdotal, you know, pieces of evidence. But I think the data that we'll get from, from having this in force for several months is gonna give us a, a better idea of which way we need to move and what services need to be augmented or even created.
That's true.
So, so let me suggest this path forward, from what I'm hearing. If you can work with Mr. Tillman to develop a updated ordinance that the administration supports and a series of, or several altern, alternatives for public engagement for council to consider. And if you can come back, I, I think that, that consideration could happen. Yeah, the alternatives could happen pretty quickly. You know, whenever you're ready to put that in front of us, we'll consider it right away, we'll get it on the agenda. And then we'll follow, we'll select one of those alternatives, move forward to get public input. And then council can choose a path forward after that public input.
Okay, very good. We can do that.
Thank you.
All right, sound good? Anything else from council members? All right. Uh, next item on our agenda, Chief, I don't know if you're staying up here for this, is the.
I can if you like.
Is the urban chicken ordinance, the backyard chicken ordinance? I'll invite Colonel Monchan as well.
I'd like to take this moment to introduce our newest member of the Salisbury Police Department family. It's our animal control officer, Pat Guyer.
Welcome. So we've discussed this a few times. This is the backyard or urban chicken ordinance. And I will hand it over to you to update us.
Okay. Well, we, we recently did, had the, you had some confusion on getting the.
Oh, before we do, I, I think I, I would be remiss if I didn't note that we have our delegate, Delegate Otto in the room. Thank you for joining us, appreciate it. Excellent. Welcome.
Different head.
Sorry, Colonel.
All right, I'm sorry for any delay in this. It was actually stuck between our department and legal for some time before we got back, so we got this done. But anyway, it's, the ordinance, I think everybody's got a, hopefully got a copy of it, but it's in draft form. We're pretty much ready to, you know, at your discretion, any final tweaks on it that you wanna make to go ahead and roll this, roll it out if that's the wishes of the council. But basically, it's just a matter of deciding specific language for the, for the charter modification, which I think also was, was submitted. So I don't have any, any changes or input from our last meeting, other than the final, any final changes that the council may like to.
Okay. Well, before we do that, then let's do this, if you have no changes other than what's published. We do have a request for a comment. Let's start with Sarah Halcott and Chelsea Eline? Eline, sorry, Sarah, Chelsea. Come over, Eline, please.
Hello, um, my name's Sarah. And a few years ago, I decided that I wanted chickens. And I had checked the ordinances and at that time, I believe you could have eight chickens. I got pregnant, life happened, decided I could finally get the chickens, got them, got the eight chickens, and decided to double-check the ordinance, and it had changed at that point to no chickens. And I wanna, I wanna bear in mind that you can buy chickens in Salisbury at Farmers and Planters, right inside city limits. No problem taking them home. I decided I didn't wanna have any issues, so I gave them to my friend outside city limits. We visit them all the time, we get great eggs. My daughter helps take care of them, she's two. She pets the chickens and holds the chickens, and they're incredibly friendly. They are a lot of work to take care of and clean up after, but she's learning that. So it's a very educational experience to see, you know, how to take care of these creatures. It's a bonding experience of, of bonding with an animal. It's also incredibly great because they eat ticks and mosquitoes. Uh, my friend's yard, who, you would walk out and you'd get covered in ticks. Two years, no ticks in the yard, much less mosquitoes in her yard, outside city limits, than in my yard, inside city limits. So, um, I think that's a really important factor that would be nice to have in my yard. There's a huge movement across America right now to bring chickens into your home, or into your yard, not in your home. There's, it's all about urban chickens and homesteading and becoming self-sustaining. And I think it's really important for people who care to be able to have ways to self-sustain themselves. This is, this city is all about Purdue. Purdue is one of our largest manufacturers and they are all about chickens. And I think it's almost crazy not to let the average homeowner, who would like to take on the responsibility of caring for chickens, to do that. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, isn't it kind of part of the American dream to be able to take care of yourself, to be self-sufficient? We, um, my fiance and I have just started our own little kind of backyard farm and we would love to have. We, my fiance and I have just started our own little kind of backyard farm and we would love to have chickens. And that's kind of been a dream, but right now we can't do it, we're not allowed to do it. Chickens don't really make more messes than dogs or cats that are outside. They pretty much clean up after themselves. You do have to do a little bit of maintenance, but you have to do that with dogs too. And dogs create bigger messes than a smaller animal does. And they do provide cleanup of the ticks and the mosquitoes, which we all know is a huge problem in this area.
They're also not as noisy as dogs.
And you can put in the language, you know, no roosters. Roosters are the ones that make the noise.
It's in line.
Hens do not make noise. No more than the dog, you know, next door does, like. And if you can have a really loud dog that's outside all the time, why can't you have a few hens that make less noise?
I know that one of the concerns has been, how are these chickens going to be policed essentially? And I, I actually, when I wrote the ordinance or compiled the ordinance a few years ago, I called the, the, the dog inspector or the, you know, animal control officer and I asked them what they thought about it. And he thought, he said, you know, I, I don't think it's going to be that big of a problem because we're not going to have that many people that want to take on that kind of responsibility to have those, those chickens. And it's just going to be just like policing dogs or cats. You know, when you have, honestly, I hear my neighbor's dogs barking all the time. The chickens, when they're, when they're going to be in your yard, your neighbors aren't going to hear them. They're not going to be that loud. So that's not going to be an issue.
The people that are going to want to take on this responsibility are going to be the ones who actually want to do it. It's not just, you know, taking care of somebody's dog, you know. Chickens, you actually have to take care of them. You have to clean up after them, you have to harvest the eggs. All of those things are going to be in your mind. It's a decision to have chickens. It's a conscious choice to have chickens.
Hopefully, it's going to be the more responsible people that want to do it and they're going to take on those responsibilities with the idea that it is a responsibility and not, you know, the people that just
Yeah. I know just from the fact that I have had this kind of backyard farm going on from this season that my yard looks better than it ever has in the entire time that I've lived there. Because I'm out there, I'm in it, I'm taking care of it.
It also could create neighborhoods because you, you'll have these eggs and you'll go to your neighbor and give them eggs and your neighbor might be out, you know, working in their yard.
The kids are going to want to come and see and like, okay, how does this happen? What do we do? Can we help? You know, this is going to add to the community, not detract from the community.
Thank you for your time.
Ladies, thank you for your passion and appreciate the thought you've put into this. Mr. Pavlikovich, I've got a request for comment from you. Would you mind coming forward?
Good afternoon, my name is Chad Pavlikovich, a little on 228 Middle Boulevard. I'm here in support of possibly having chickens here in Salisbury, in town limits. I think to echo what the ladies have said, you know, we're talking about Salisbury with this turnaround and moving towards a possible sustainability and looking at the idea of being more green and more friendly with the environment. Chickens, I think within city limits with those people who are responsible would be a very, very good idea. I have raised chickens in the past. They are not as difficult as some people may think. They're actually quite enjoyable as, not so much pets, but part of the family. They do, do a lot of good for the, the yard. They do remove the ticks and they do remove the mosquitoes, which we do know we have problems down here on the shore. I really don't know much more to say other than what the ladies have said. I think it's good, it'd be a good learning tool as an educator, any way to educate the, the children as well as the local community on things such as animal husbandry. And, and knowing that Purdue is the, one of the largest employers on the shore. I, I think, you know, it's, it's almost a no-brainer when it's coming to chickens. A lot of small cities and towns are actually moving in this direction. I know Berlin has decided to do that. So I think, you know, one of our local neighbor, neighboring towns has, has made that decision and I think they're doing it with great success. Of course, I think there needs to be rules and regulations and those people that don't follow, of course, should be penalized as any ordinance should be policed. But I am definitely in favor of taking this one step further and allowing us to look at moving with having chickens in town limits. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Delegate Otto, do you have anything you'd like to add from a business perspective?
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, sir.
I'll say a few words just to echo what the lady said. I think it is a buy-local or grow-your-own-food trend that I think is going to be wholesome and nutritious and to see where your food comes from is always a good thing. And I would think that the city will benefit from it. I do know, I know lawbreakers, I guess, of one or two people that are raising chickens in the city limits, so it's
You don't have to give up their addresses.
The proliferation of them is, my only concern is for the avian flu that we're dealing with now across the country. And I think the bigger threat than it would be from these small flocks of chickens is the geese that we have roaming up and down the streets and that they're going to be the problem that will convey that. So a prudent policy to allow chickens would be a good thing. And it certainly has been an attraction for our store to have the chicks in several months during the year and people come in and they buy other things as well.
Nice, excellent.
So they're doorbusters.
Yeah. I did, I did see, or I did receive, and I don't know if it was sent to all or just to me, but there was a question from Dr. Bruce Stewart Brown and Chris Perdue, from Perdue's, you know, animal welfare folks, asking about if avian influenza hit hard, would there be the ability to call a flock and for MDA to inspect? And that's actually already in the, in the proposed ordinance. So I think those are, I think those points or those questions are addressed if it did happen, if it did hit us hard. You know, anything else that, especially you, Officer Guyer, as, you know, one of the people who would be sort of on the front line, so to speak, anything else that you would like to see us consider or, you know, anything else you'd like us to speak to before we
No, I don't think so.
Move any further?
Most everything's been covered in the ordinance that I see here. You know, the only thing we need to remind everybody is at this point in time, we don't have a way to store these animals. So if they get removed from somebody for whatever reason, we don't, can't keep them. So that's one thing we've got to keep in mind when we're handling this and dealing with these ordinances.
They would have to be destroyed?
They would have to be destroyed, yeah. Whether it's, you know, because they're getting loose too often or, you know, as you said, with avian flu or whatever.
Sure.
It would be the obvious case, but something we need to keep in mind.
That was the concern we spoke of early on, was that the human society wouldn't take dogs and cats.
Okay.
So whether it be, whether we're talking about chickens, lizards, snakes, whatever it is.
Human society's not taking them.
Human society's not going to deal with that unless, you know, unless we have a, well, in, 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 in cases, rare cases with different reptiles and so forth, local pet stores have been
Correct. We've got some avenues for some of the other animals, but for these, we just don't have, we don't have the resources right now for that.
Okay.
There might be a way to connect with a farm.
So the comment was that there may be a way to connect to the, to a farm. But, you know.
But if they're diseased, they don't, they're not going to take them either. Or suspected of, I mean, there could be a dispute as to whether they are or not.
It's like if a dog has rabies, you have to kill it, you know. But if a chicken has, you know, avian flu, then it has to become
So, I'm sorry, Ms. Mitchell, did you have comments?
Yeah, a couple. One is regarding the section on avian flu. It's very narrow. It basically just gives us the ability to act if they have avian flu. But there are other diseases that are prevalent among fowl that would also necessitate calling. So that may need to be broadened. There are some, histoplasmosis is one that acts sort of like a hunt, huntavirus, where it's the dust from cleaning it up that can infect a person that creates a crossover from animal to and there are experts in the, in the area much more than I, but just from my reading, that unlike with cats and dogs, well, some with cats and pregnant women, you don't, you don't get near them because cleaning their litter box can, can get those diseases to cross over from, between species. Same thing with chickens. You don't see that a lot with dogs, you don't see that a whole lot happening. But with chickens and the various diseases that we're seeing now, and some are pretty prevalent, I have concerns about that. The comment was made that there was, you have to make a conscious choice to have these and you're going to be dedicated to do that. But a lot of people make conscious choices to get bunnies or dogs or cats and then they don't take care of them either and we end up with our animal control officer going out there and having to deal with it. And I think that that is a resource that's already very significantly strained. And then there's the other unsavories that can come with keeping chickens, the snakes, the weasels, the, the other things that they draw. And unlike Purdue, yes, we have a lot of chicken houses around here, none in the city. And, and because that, that's because we have
That we know of.
Yeah, no chicken houses like
Commercial chicken houses.
Yeah, commercial chicken houses. And there's a good reason for that. But these people, they're doing it on a professional basis. They're being paid to do this or they're doing it for their livelihood. And if they don't do it, they don't eat, literally. You can always still go to the store and buy chickens if you have chickens and don't take care of them and they, you know, whatever happens. And I, I realize that the roosters are a lot louder than the hens, but the hens do make a significant amount of noise when you get enough of them together. If you have them and your neighbors have them and then another neighbor doesn't, then we're looking at Sorry. We can make noise just like the roosters.
Regulating the number of chickens that you can allow to have
Right.
In a, in a specific block or street.
Okay. Yeah, my, my biggest concern is, is with, A, the disease and B, the rodents and the snakes and other things that it, it would bring. Because everybody does not take care of things at the level that, that the people in this room are talking about doing. And I, I have every confidence that you would. But there are going to be people who say, oh, chickens, that's a great idea, especially Easter, you know. And then there we are, straining our resources even further and ha, and having the police responding to calls because they're not being taken care of and there's flies and whatever else around and we only have two animal control officers.
Could I ask one of you who has a little experience with buying the materials for an enclosure or hen house? Could you, well, you have to come to, sorry, we can't pick you up on audio from the audience. Could you speak to the cost? I'm just curious.
Yeah, that's the difference between getting a dog and getting a chicken. When you, when you go and buy chickens, you realize, okay, you're going to need the chicken food, a chicken water, a chicken enclosure. You can, you can do a chicken coop from anywhere, like a large dog cage that's going to be about $200 to a very intricate $2,000 chicken coop in your backyard if you want to. Go all out and, you know, have a customized wooden one. We used a shed and turned it into the chicken coop at my friend's house. It was antique windows and, you know, a dog door for it. But it's, it's not like going to the, to the store and picking up a, a dog. Even though a dog you might get is like, you know, $400 at the, the do, the, the dog store. A chicken might just start off at, at $3, but very quickly you're going to realize you need to, you need a bag of food that's going to be $10 to $30, depending on the size. The, the food, water, another $10. And, and each, as you go along, you're realizing, okay, and I need hay to put in there. It's, it's, a lot, a lot of my neighbors have dogs. A lot of them put them on a leash in their backyard and leave them there. A lot of them I see don't even have food and water. However, if you, if you get a chicken and you have it in, in enclosure, because that's part of the ordinance, that they need to be in an enclosure unless they're supervised. And, you know, that's something, if you, the, the difference between having a dog and putting it in your backyard in an enclosure and having a chicken in your backyard in an enclosure is that if you really, you know, want these eggs, you realize you're going to have to feed it the calcium and feed it the food that it needs and give it fresh water once, at least once a day. And the more that, just like any other animals, the more you play with them, you build a relationship with them. And like I said, they're, they're just as friendly as cats or dogs. It's, I, I have the same concern that some people would do, do all that and, and realize, oh, I don't have the time. I have a, you know, this job that's just too much. And I would hope that those people would find someone else to give their chicken to, to, to pass it on. But it's not just buying a $3 chicken and hoping it survives. And also chickens need companions. So you can't just have one chicken. If you just have one chicken, it's probably going to die from the stress of not having a flock. You need a couple of chickens so that they can, you know, ha, build that relationship with each other. In, in my neighborhood, I see possums and snakes and, and everything else. And I've thought about, you know, how am I, am I going to be able to keep it clean? Am I going to be able to take the time every day? And I work in my garden almost every day, take care of my garden. And I would want to use that fertilized hay to then put in my garden too. And I think that people would need, you, you know, you would hope that anyone, whether they buy a dog or a cat or a chicken or a rabbit, is going to take the time to think about, is this an appropriate pet for me?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Halcott. So it sounds to me as if there are, there's at least one amendment that needs to be made prior to this moving any further, which would be an expansion of 6.051140A to include other diseases.
May I? I haven't had a chance because I oppose it.
Sure. Ms. Shields?
Yes, I oppose it. I, I live around Purdue plant. And the odor that comes from Purdue plant is awful. And I think that you ladies may do what you're supposed to do, but I guarantee you, you're going to have more problems. Other people's not going to follow the rules and regulations. They're not going to clean out their pens or their chicken coops. They're going to let the chickens run loose just like the geese and ducks, wherever you got a problem with them. I'm concerned about the, the possums and raccoons that come in your yard already and snakes come in your yard. It's already expressed by the animal control. You don't have a place to put them in case someone does not take care of the chickens like they're supposed to. That's added strain on the animal control officer. They already have enough to do with pit bulls and running bad cats and cats getting in the trees and basements and, because they came to my house to get a cat out of the basement. So I know some of the things that do deadly. I know when my father and his friend on Jersey Road had chickens and geese and everything, the county passed the ordinance, you couldn't have chickens and things on the street close, close by. We're dealing with people in the, in the residential area. You may like the chickens, but the neighbor may not like it. It's going to cause problems with the, with the neighbors. I've talked to people who think it's ridiculous of us passing this urban chicken ordinance. I'm not probably the single person that, I had chickens as pets coming up as a child, but I was in the country. Jersey Road at that time was, was farmland and country. I would not want anyone raising chickens next door to me. I wouldn't, I wouldn't fight them over it, but personally, I wouldn't want to see it happen. And I know there's people in this community that does not want to see it happen or wouldn't want chickens next door to them. Again, I, I just don't support the ordinance. And I didn't support the bees either, so I'm not voting. Don't worry about it. I didn't, I didn't support the bees either. But I'll be, I'm voting, but I'm just expressing my concern and, and, and national avian flu. But I'm, I'm worried about the, the community or the residential streets.
Well, then we don't want them in the streets either.
I mean, the residential people
Can't take comment from the audience, we need you to come to the
That may be opposed to it when they see it coming up and they may not voice their opinion here. But when you do pass this ordinance, I'm quite sure there's going to be someone, how come someone's putting a chicken coop next door to me, I don't want it? And they're going to be calling the animal control guy to, to fight it and stop it.
Well, right, but, you know, we're, we're allowed to do what we want on our property as long, whether or not our neighbor likes it, so long as it's allowed by law. So if we pass a law, you know, whether or not, you know, you like it, that's, and that's why this is an important decision. Important for us to consider all the factors before we do make the decision. In my opinion, based on what I've heard today and, you know, I, is that I think this is probably not the most pressing issue we'll address today or, or all year. But, you know, I think what, what's that? I do know, I know exactly how you feel about it. I knew how you felt about it before we walked in this room. I knew how you felt about it before we walked in this room. I think we all did. But what I will say is, you know, I think what I've heard today reinforces that I think this is the, a step in the right direction for our community and for, um, you know, building a sustainable local economy. Um, and for those reasons, I continue to support it. Um, and I think it's a, a good idea and I think it's a good thing for our, our neighborhoods and good thing for our community, good thing for connecting, um, you know, people within the city of Salisbury to agriculture and reminding them that, you know, we live in a rural region and, you know, reminding them where food does come from. Um, that being said, the, the greatest concerns here are, are human and animal welfare and, uh, and then, um, the stresses on our staff and, and on our city employees and the, um, you know, not making your job more difficult. So those are the two things that I think are most important for us to consider here and that's why, um, I think passing an ordinance that is very explicit, um, is actually a benefit. And I do think that people will do it or already are doing it, whether, whether we have an ordinance in place or not. So it's important to be clear about what we want if we're going to make any changes. So, yeah, my, my opinion is that it's, it's, um, probably for the better, um, and that there may be challenges along the way.
Well, they have. Well, they have, um, they, I think they had to register with the Department of Agriculture.
Yes, they do.
Well, they have a, a sticker or something on their coop that, that people know, like the animal control.
I don't know what the Department of Agriculture requires.
My, my assumption would be, ma'am...
But the department...
My assumption would be, ma'am, it would be like with rabies tags for dogs. The dog doesn't have to be wearing the rabies tag. You just have to be able to produce the proof when asked for.
Okay.
So if it's a certificate or you're registering with the department, I'm sure they give you a slip that says your chicken is registered.
Thank you.
You know, this many.
I, I agree that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Spees?
Uh, go ahead because I think I'm, I'm going to refer to something he referred to a few moments ago.
Yeah, I, I agree that people should be able to do what they want to do on their property, but not at the point where it infringes on what I do on my property. And if your coop's outside my bedroom window and your hens start raising holy in the morning wake me up, I'm not going to be happy and I'm probably going to be on the phone with animal control or the police and saying, produce that certificate. And I'm going to, you know, I'm going to be watching every minute from my second story window whether you've cleaned up today or whether you've put water out today or you, you know, and I'm going to be calling on a regular basis. Um, if, if I'm irritated by the fact that you have chickens, it, I'm going to be that thorn in the side of, just like the person that is not happy with the dog next door. Um, but I don't support this. I don't think we need chickens in the city. I think we are rural and rural enough that we can get fresh eggs, um, from many other sources very close by without going out of our way too much. And I know the convenience of walking out back and picking your basil or your rosemary or your eggs or your eggplant is wonderful, but the eggplants don't make noise and the rosemary doesn't make noise. The chickens make noise and they draw, they're, um, undesirables. And I don't, for that reason, I don't support it. Um, I, I think that it's going to be a detriment. You mentioned that you have to, you buy the chicken, you have to buy this, you have to buy that, but who's going to enforce that? You go to the store and say, I want to buy five chickens. They're not going to say, well, you have to buy this, this coop and you have to buy this food and you have to buy this water. They're going to sell you the chickens and you're on your way. And then it's up to, to the city law enforcement to make sure that you've done everything that you're supposed to do.
Mr. Spees?
A couple of things. Referring to, uh, you mentioned changing something. I'm guessing you're going to line 136. Is that where you're talking about going regarding about pathogens?
I think it's 183. One, yeah.
And where?
183.
Yeah, it starts at 183 in A. It, it only talks about avian flu, but it mentioned some others, I think needs to be broadened.
Okay, virtually everything we have that is transmissible from hu, from chickens to humans deals with the feces. Um, so good husbandry of, of, of these animals is what's going to be required, just as with any other animal. You can get worms from your dog, uh, from your cat. Uh, you can get toxidiomycosis, actually, histoplasmosis from other sources as well. So maintaining your, your sites is, is foremost here. Um, and regarding somebody who doesn't like having chickens next door, well, if they keep on calling with baseless complaints, they are harassing somebody and then we move on in the law enforcement, uh, vein and, and going in a different direction there.
But they're not baseless if they're not following to the letter.
Then they, they have, then they have to deal with whatever is required to keep these animals.
Right.
Just as if they had a dog or, I'd like to say a cat, but we don't have really...
My, my point in that was the, the drain on the resources in that. If they're, that someone who is, is not happy with it, not that they would make baseless claims, but that they are going to call every time there is a, a, any variation from the letter of the law.
I would like to say that probably, you know, when we, when we enact this law, we do enact this law and I support it, having a long, uh, history of animal husbandry in my past, um, that you're not going to have more than 50 or 100 people raising chickens in the city that, that are going to be, uh, you know, uh, part of the urban landscape. It may catch on, but I think initially it's just going to be a small amount of people doing this on the up and up. There are going to be some people who are going to be, you know, trying to do it on the cuff and not, not taking care of the animals, but that's where the animal control officer comes in and that's where taking that, that away from them until they can or they demonstrate that they will take care of the animals in a, in a righteous manner.
For the record, I don't support tying dogs up on a leash and letting them stay there either. So maybe we ought to look at that.
Uh, I, I think, you know, a chain or a leash, you know, there are regulations about that, but anybody that does that does not have respect for that animal.
Agreed.
Period.
Mr. Heath, any thoughts?
Uh, yes, I, I have two, two comments and one may be considered sarcastic, but I'll say it.
That's welcome.
It's never stopped you before.
I, uh, I fully support the ordinance first of all. And, uh, secondly, actually for, I have two comments. One is, uh, Ms. Shields, you can, you don't have to worry because chickens don't fight.
They peck. They peck. I know, because I had chickens.
Yeah, me too. I did too.
Now, and, uh, the other thing is, um, I, I think that actually the chickens would be a lot easier to control than some of the uncontrolled kids that are running around with no parental supervision.
No chicken curfew needed, is that what you're saying?
I agree with you, Tim.
And, and now what's your sarcastic comment?
Arrest my case.
All right. Anything else? Any other comments? Okay. Um, is there council consensus to move this to legislative session?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So, um, by a vote of three to two, this will move to legislative session. Okay. And that is the last, uh, item on our open session and we, um, council is going to continue closed session meeting from earlier. Chief, Colonel, Officer, welcome and thank you. Appreciate your time and thank you for everyone who participated today. Did not expect that the big draw today was going to be chickens.
Interesting that the two people who grew up with chickens don't want the chickens.
There you go.
I grew up with chickens. I had 150 chickens.
Ms. Telem?
I don't like it though.
We just have a brief recess before finishing.
Sure. Okay. All right. So, um, we will take a five-minute recess before we reconvene in closed session.